Be pulled off of the agenda. They have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to move, support.
Right, presentation, we have a proclamation.
Um, Mary, at the vote on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a, I'm sorry, when I go to support. It needs to hear. All in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to presentation. Oh, the proclamation. I will read that. Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a commemorative week, first introduced in June of nineteen sixty-eight by California Congressman George E. Brown. And whereas President Lyndon B. Johnson, followed by declaring Hispanic Heritage Week nationally in that same year. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan expanded the declaration to a month. And whereas the Hispanic American population has grown to be over sixty million in the United States and makes up the largest minority group in the nation. And whereas the Hispanic community has made a great impact on the nation through their contributions in art, food, music, religion, and service. And whereas Hispanic and Latinx make up five point six percent of Michigan's population and increased from four point four percent in twenty-ten. And whereas Michigan is a fortune, is fortunate to have such a large population of Hispanic Americans that has impacted its economy through business growth, innovative ideas, job creation, and many other contributions that affects the daily lives of Americans. And whereas it is important to highlight and recognize achievements of Hispanic Americans as they continue their efforts in enhancing our communities. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Bucolani, hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as Hispanic Heritage Month, given under my hand and seal of the city of Bucolani, sixteen twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor. My so-called claim. We have another proclamation. Um, Mr. Helanga, do you have that ready?
Uh, yes, it's a council member's suite will be reading that.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, this is a proclamation in tribute in honor of, to the Bucolani thrift shop. Being known to all the city of Bucolani, pay tribute to honor to the Bucolani thrift shops. The Bucolani thrift shop, a nonprofit five oh one two three charity, has often served the Bucolani area for over eighty years. During that time, the All Volunteer Organization has provided affordable, gently used clothing and household items to our community and donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to various local organizations, including Hope Clinic, Bucolani Meals on Wheels, Friends Indeed, Food Gatherers, Washington County Medical Health, and Feeding the Sheep. Because of the efforts of the thrift shop volunteers, thousands of disadvantaged persons have been able to obtain affordable clothing and household goods to improve their lives. The Bucolani thrift shop renovated a donated warehouse at fourteen South Washington Street in downtown Bucolani or its retail store, and the store is a valuable addition to the downtown street speed. The sixty-nine members of the group donated an average of six thousand seven hundred hours of work per year to help underserved in the Bucolani area. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Bucolani hereby proclaims Friday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as Bucolani Thrift Shop eightieth anniversary day, and encourages everyone to join in commending all past and present volunteers for their valuable, for their many valuable contributions to the community. And so proclaim.
Your Honor, I believe that there's a representative of the thrift shop here, does she think?
Okay. If there is, please come for, come up to my screen. And tell us your name and if I can say a few words about thrift shop.
I'm Nancy Hamilton. I'm the president of the Bucolani thrift shop. And we're all very proud to serve the community and hope to continue on for another eighty-plus years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Former member of the thrift shop, and I, I stopped when I was taking some classes. Uh, I'd like to say that I see a large, uh, one, uh, charity that we, or one organization that, um, I didn't know at that time, we donated a lot to, or to people that were leaving was Dawn Farm. So are you still, uh, servicing the people that leave Dawn Farm? Okay, we, I know that was, that was a biggie and also helping with DTE bills.
Yes, we, 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 we help individuals who are having difficulty meeting their utility bills or, um, this other, other incidental expenses that might, it's an emergency in their lives. And, um, we hope to keep them in housing and in, in their jobs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the other ladies like to have a word?
Nancy, you have.
This, uh, should we just wait and call?
Yeah.
Ladies, we will present that to you when all the, uh, the other council people have an opportunity to sign it. And I just want to encourage you to keep up the, the good work. I really enjoy the times that I worked there and, um, you do the excellent work.
Thank you, and we will, when we, when we receive the, um, the document, we will frame it and hang it with pride in shot.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, next on the agenda, we have public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to, or on screen that would like to have, um, address counsel? I see now, Mr. Helanga, is there anyone, uh, on?
Um, if anyone attending virtually like, would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Uh, mayor, no hands have been raised.
Alright, thank you. Well, we may have lost, um, Mr. Helanga, I believe you have the consent.
Resolution number two zero two-two dash two-two-six evolved by the Council of the City of Bucolani, that the following items be approved, resolution number two zero two-two dash two-two-seven, approving the minutes of September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, City Council meeting. And resolution number two zero two-two dash two-two-eight, approving ordinance number one four zero three, in ordinance entitled ordinance to impose a moratorium on issuance of new marijuana permits for sale or dispensing of marijuana in the city of Bucolani for a hundred and eighty days. Second reading, I so vote.
Support.
Is the move and support it? Um, Mr. Helanga, would you call the roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with four yes, three absent.
Thank you. Okay, uh, resolution number twenty-two-two-nine, I believe you have that, Mr. Sweet?
I do. Uh, resolution number two zero two-two dash two-two-nine, resolved by the Council of the City of Bucolani, whereas the city of Bucolani recognizes the importance of a warming center during the cold harsh winter months in Michigan and seeks to assist our most vulnerable. And whereas the city operates the Bucolani freight malls and generates revenue to help support the ongoing maintenance and community purpose of the space. And whereas the investment in a warming center at the free house is part of a broader strategy to prioritize community health collaboration with community partners like the County Shelter Association and the Bucolani Downtown Development Authority. And now therefore be it resolved that the Bucolani City Council approved the memorandum of understanding with the Shelter Association of Washington County to support the warming center operations beginning in November two thousand twenty-two and ending in April two thousand twenty-three, and I so move.
Support.
Is the move and supported any comments or questions discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes, um, so, uh, there has been a slight development here in that, um, uh, we've potentially been able to arrange, uh, for overnight, uh, overnight, uh, shelter for, um, well through, uh, St. Luke's Church, potentially. Uh, we're not meeting until tomorrow with the Shelter Association and, uh, Mr. Jacobs, so, um, if staff has a recommendation of what we should do with the current MOU, just in case, uh, budget changes or location changes, I don't know that, uh, St. Luke's isn't willing to do a daytime, um, but might be worth the S.
Okay, are you saying that there is a place that's willing to provide overnight lodging?
Uh, yeah, there's some potential there. Um, I had a meeting with the interim director of the church last week, and, uh, we're doing another meeting tomorrow, so, um, it's still preliminary stages, so I'm not sure if there'll be overnight yet, um, but we'll know more tomorrow, so I'm not really sure what we could do with the current MOU, um, if we want to, um, approve it and maybe do some modifications later, or if we wanna people.
Yeah, as we were, um, I was thinking about this, and I think, um, I probably would prefer if we went ahead and dealt with this and then after, um, we find out what's gonna happen as far as the shelter, the overnight stay is concerned, that we deal with that, um, separately, only bring it back in. That's my preference. Christopher, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with you, Francis. I think, um, this agreement, it solidifies what we've been able to do last year, which was really successful. And I think that any amendments that we make to the daytime warming shelter location or additional services would have to be quoted, um, you know, probably with the Shelter Association of Washington County. Um, and so I think that collaboration can happen after this is approved. Um, so I agree with you, Francis.
Okay, and you said that that was, did I hear you mention that St. Luke's was a possibility?
Yes.
St. Luke's here on here, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to, I agree with that also, that I think we should go ahead with this, uh, that is before, and then treat that as a separate item. Did you have something, Sydney? I, I just wanted to thank, um, staff, and I wanted to thank Councilwoman Grant, Jones Chance, for, um, making this a priority and getting on it, you know, um, so that we're prepared for the cold weather. So I'm, I'm especially appreciative because we have not, um, ever come as close to maybe an overnight. And I think we were successful last year. They had some pinks, but, um, the Shelter Association and the city, you know, kind of worked together to make it better, suddenly this time around, so it's gonna be better. So I just kind of wanted to just give those shout-outs to, um, staff and also to, um, Councilwoman Jones Chance, that we get this priority. You're here. I agree with that. Thank you very much for taking that, um, uh, Mr. Jones Chance.
Hey, look, so are we doing the least of these, I mean?
Right. Are there any further, uh, comments or questions, discussion? And do we, do we have another representative here from the Shelter Association?
We do. Dan is available to answer any questions. This agreement is basically the same agreement, uh, but three thousand dollars, um, is the cost additionally for the same scope of services. Um, so, other than that, same agreement as we approved last year, uh, Monday through Thursday, um, until six o'clock.
I didn't get his name. Would you like to have a word or two? Dan?
Yeah, hi there, um. I think it's my chance to speak. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, my name's Dan Kelly. I'm the Director of the Shelter. I'm really appreciative of the partnership. Uh, as Christopher mentioned, last year it was very successful. We served almost two hundred people through the daytime warming shelter. Uh, and it was a great opportunity to bring people into a broader way of services, whether that's housing, food, uh, through partnership with food gatherers, um, and then other supportive services. So it's a good entree into the community in terms of supporting some of our most vulnerable residents and, uh, very appreciative of the partnership and looking forward to another successful year as we, things start to get colder. We really need the shelter. Um, we're very glad to partner with the city here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and as we often attest to, it's getting colder earlier this year than usual. Is that your hand up, Mr. Johnson? Yeah.
Uh, yes, I was, uh, looking through the summary of the RFL. Um, it's like, the current agreement was for forty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-five with an increase of about three thousand dollars. Uh, but in the second to last paragraph, um, the total cost is listed as fifty-four thousand, or fifty-four thousand five sixty-seven? Should that read forty-four thousand?
No, it is, it is the fifty-four. Last year approved was about fifty-one. Um, and then, sorry, then, then that is, it should read fifty-four is the total cost, um, up from fifty-one.
Yeah, okay, I was looking at different numbers. Thanks.
So we're looking at fifty-four thousand. Oh, okay, thank you. Anything else? No? If not, uh, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Helanga?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Four yes and three absent for motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the Police Advisory Commission nomination for, um, Mr. Anthony Morgan. And he's applying, and when Mr. Morgan was on council, he served as council liaison. Uh, I don't know that, um, we need to carry this over, um. I believe, Mr. Vara, we can vote on this tonight.
Yeah, sure, Honor.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to have a motion to, for us to vote on this tonight rather than carry it over.
Uh, I move to appoint Anthony Morgan to the Police Advisory Commission.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, discussion? The, uh, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with four yes, three absent.
Alright, thank you. Okay, next is Board of Commission Communications. We've been trying to meet with, have a joint meeting with the, uh, Police Advisory Commission, and we, uh, I think said, uh, said two or three times, and then we had to change the date, so we have some other dates that have been presented to us, October the fourth, the eighteenth, and November the second. Um, I believe, Mr. Helanga.
So, these are the num, the dates that the Police Advisory Commission did forward, however, October fourth is just next week.
Right.
October eighteenth is the joint meeting with, uh, the Planning Commission. So, and then November second would be the Wednesday following the first meeting in November.
Okay, so that would be the only time, only one of these days that would actually be, in, next, the fourth is very, very close. But we could do that if we want it, but very suggestion or motion, Mr. Jones Chance?
Um, I, I would say, it's not a problem with, uh, but whiteback proposed the fourth, um, and I would assume that they are the ones making, uh, any kind of presentations, they can be ready by then. So, right, we agree with them.
Um, I'm, I'm not entirely sure that they have an agenda in mind, um, so that would be, it, it might be difficult to put something together. That would be on, uh, the mayor and the chair of the body.
They have been, um, the chair, uh, Ms. Will Hough and I, we have been talking, so there is a tentative agenda um, that just needs some final touches.
With the, uh, additional personnel on the body, it, it, there'd probably be needing, a need for a larger space. We'll have seven plus now five, or I'm sorry, six. We'll have five and then plus seven, so that's gonna be twelve people. We could put tables on the end if that's what council desires, and I'm happy to do that, but it, it will be a little bit, little bit, uh, stuffed in here.
Do we, is it possible we can have a joint meeting at the Fager Center?
I, I do not know if that, the, the space is available yet.
Okay, um. To the mayor.
I was just wondering if we needed the, uh, council members that were absent to weigh in on, you know, their availability to be, to be there.
I can't, could you use your mic?
I can do that Tuesdays, but that Wednesday, November second, unfortunately, I have conflict.
Okay.
Um, perhaps it makes sense to see if we can do it on the eighteenth. Half of the meeting would be with the Planning Commission, the other half with the Police Advisory Commission.
How much is on the agenda for the Planning Commission?
It's essentially just to discuss what, what the plans are with chapter seven and the zoning code that is attached to chapter seven.
Wait, now, that was, it was muffled.
It, it has to do with chapter seven and then the zoning code that is attached to chapter seven.
I think that.
Well, that's the only thing.
I think the marijuana discussion might be likely.
Yeah. Makes so too. Well, I, let's set it for the fourth, and then if we find out that others cannot, I will speak with, uh, Ms. Will Hough, see me after this meeting. And if we find out, um, that we would not have a forum to meet with them, then we can, um, we can change it. We have a motion to that.
This has been noticed, this has been noticed.
This is a regular city council date, so it would just, yeah, we just add that to the agenda.
Mr. Jones Chance, you have the.
Yeah, I would, I would move to add that to the agenda.
Move.
Add the, uh, whiteback joint meeting to the agenda for October fourth.
It would actually be a separate meeting.
No, this would be, that's the same date as the next council meeting.
That's the same day as what?
Our next council meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought our council meeting was the, okay, it is the fourth, yeah. Okay, it's been moved, is there support for that? Okay, it's been moved and supported that we add, uh, a joint meeting with the, uh, Police Advisory Commission to the, uh, October fourth agenda. Uh, Mr., any more discussion? Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Helanga?
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries with four yes, three no.
Thank you. Okay, Board of Commission Liaison Report.
Three yes, correct.
No one is here for the Police Advisory Commission or, um, Human Relations Commission, Arts Commission. And it brings us down to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sweet.
Yeah, so Parks and Recreation hosted their Fall River Day event last Sunday, the twenty-fifth. Um, we had about a hundred and forty people take advantage of free contact trips down the river, um, as well as interact with other, uh, local Bucolani and Washington County vendors and exhibitors. So it was a little dicey with the weather, but we missed most of the rain, and everyone that came out had a really enjoyable time.
Very good, thank you. Sustainability Commission, I believe that person is not here. Historic District? How many do you report? Thank you. Planning Commission?
Uh, I have nothing to report either. Was that September meeting, Jason?
Okay.
So.
Um, Zoning Board of the field?
Um, I did not attend that year.
No one.
Is there a staff person here that attended that meeting? No?
Oh, and, uh, there is a, uh, DVA meeting on the third, um, that's on the third.
There is, uh, a DVA. Alright, it adds, anyone here from the bicentennial?
Uh, I guess it's me and Jennifer. Um, I, uh, I attended the, uh, event. It went quite well. Sort of attended, I was part of it. Um, went well. Everyone, uh, seemed to have a good time, and, um, I'm not sure of the total amount of money raised, but it looks like, um, uh, the bicentennial celebrations being underway will be well attended, so looking forward to a good twenty-twenty-three.
Alright, very good, thank you. Liaison Report, CINCAP update. Um, I was out of town last week and did not attend the CINCAP, uh, meeting. However, on, I believe it's October the fourteenth, let me check the date, um, is the General Assembly. The General Assembly is usually held in the afternoon, however, this, uh, General Assembly is going to be held, um, daytime, starting at eight-thirty. Nine, registration, eight-thirty and nine o'clock, um. I'm sorry, it is the thirteenth, which is the Thursday, October the thirteenth. And it starts at, registration starts at eight-thirty, and the meeting starts at nine, and it goes from nine to two. Uh, so if there's anyone that is interested, I can give you more information on that. Um, the General Assemblies are usually, um, very, very informed, that they have lots of, uh, trainings during those meetings, so if anyone is interested, please let me know. I'll give you the rest of the information. Uh, Washington Area Transportation Study.
The council doesn't need a dance, so, I think. No, no meeting.
No meeting, thank you. Urban County.
I was on, I was on, but that's, we give this first.
Okay, thank you. Bucolani, the, uh, Downtown Balkan Authority, uh, Mr., is Mr. Jacobs still there? I know they had a meeting last Thursday.
He is not.
He's not. Uh, Mr. Myers, do you have any report on that? Okay, thank you. Um, I wasn't able to. I wasn't able to attend because I was out of that, oh. And rather for pool, Mister Will Hoffman is not, uh, available.
I can give a quick update on that if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Um, from our last Parks and Rec meeting, um, in regards to the pool, so they're still wrapping up, um, some closing things now and. Already starting planning for the summer twenty-three season and are expecting, hopefully, not guaranteed. Um, funding from Trinity Health St. Joe's and the, you're at Clinton Metro Parks again for free youth song lessons, uh, for kids for the next, um, summer season. So that's what they're expecting, but it's not yet confirmed, so that is what they're looking forward to and planning on, um, right now, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, is Mister Joe Rutherford still very active with that?
I don't think he is, um, he was a member of the board for a while, I think he has since stepped down. I think he sometimes experiences, but not as engaged as he once was, no.
Okay, thank you, I know, uh, he used to be quite active and did get lots of, um. A lot of passes and things for the children. Okay, uh, that brings us to council proposed business and we'll start with you, Mister Sweet.
I don't have anything.
Mister Simmons? Mister Jones Chan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I enjoyed the joint meeting with the school board last night, um. And I am looking forward to, uh, finding more ways that we can collaborate with them. Um, mostly around, uh, revenue generation, um, and, uh. And our shared interest in, um. Branding for the city and for the, the school district. Saying the word of how wonderful we both are.
Yeah.
That's all.
I wanna agree with you on that, that the meeting was, uh, I thought the meeting was a very good meeting. And, um, appreciate the work that, um, Superintendent, um, VR. I have done and the board of trustees and staff are tremendous and when they, um. I was really, I did not know about the, uh, national recognition that they had got. That was very exciting and I wanted to ask, uh, see them continue, I think that was very good. Um, there is a group that has been meeting on for the last probably close to four years. Called the Itzalanti Council of Elders and it is patterned after the Council of Elders in, uh, Howard County, Maryland. The Mister Nat Austin came here with the National Association of African Americans in HR. And they have in twenty eighteen, they have their twentieth anniversary here. And it all started with a simple call from the, uh, Itzalanti Visitors and Convention Bureau, uh, general, young man that was working there at the time. But when they came, he fell in love, they fell in love with Itzalanti. And they made a five years, signed a five-year MOU with the, uh, school district. Howard County, Maryland, the schools there were, uh, very much in the same situation. And at the same, uh, productive level that YCS was five years, four years ago. And they are now one of the top three districts in the city. And that group, the group of elders, uh, Council of Elders has been working and, uh, promoting the school and, uh. Before the pandemic did provide a scholarship and so they are working, um, closely with the school district with, uh. Miss, with Doctor Hoffman and also, uh, Superintendent Ross. So, uh, that group will continue to work with them and hopefully we'll continue to see more and more, uh, recognition for the school district as we go forth. Um, one of the things that I wanna mention, we, uh, I. Uh, passed it on, we got a letter from, um, the, from a resident and, um. Angkor Circle, we talked a little bit about it before the meeting, uh, about rats. And if we can get on that and if we can kinda keep them isolated so they don't just start spreading throughout the city. And hopefully we, they have not, I don't know if any, there have been any other reports. But, um, I can certainly understand what the resident was saying about let's get rid of them. Um, I have some, a couple of announcements, one, some of you can see the shirt that I'm wearing, it says, we are unbeatable. And this is the shirt from, I believe it was last year or year before last. From the men and women and men working to make a change. Uh, they host a domestic violence, uh, walk every first Saturday in October. So that is coming up this Saturday, uh, and it starts at eight o'clock, they will start, uh, registering people. And, um, I think the, the, they're asking for to walk, they're asking for thirty, at least a thirty-five dollar donation. They were hoping that people would, um, also, uh, get donations from others to support their walk. This year their goal is seventy-five hundred dollars and that seventy-five hundred dollars will go to a family that has been displaced. Because of, uh, domestic violence, so it will be to, uh, help with rent, help them get resettled. And, uh, make some provisions for children, if children are there. So I encourage everyone, it's gonna be at Park Ridge, uh, Park, uh, this Saturday at eight o'clock. So if you're free, um, please, it's always a nice event, they start out with a, a warm-up of, um. Zumba, so, uh, so you're not just starting out cold if you walk, so please, if you can, join them. On October the eighth. There will be a violence intervention rally. And this, uh, has come out of, uh, the Community Violence Intervention Team's, uh, effort that's going around. And there was a group, uh, called Together by Pastor, uh, Cannon. And out of that, those, uh, that group, they had wanted, they came together because they wanted to do something about the violence. They joined in with the Community Violence Team and they have come up with, there will be a rally from ten to one. On, uh, October the eighth at Park Ridge Center. Uh, there will be, uh, they'll have, uh, several speakers have been invited to speak. And there were also, uh, several pastors are being invited to, to offer prayer, so it'll be a combination of, uh, rally. Prayer rally, prayer rally and speakers rally. Um, so and they will, they will have entertainment, they will, and they will be, uh, serving a lunch of hot dogs, chips and cookies. And I believe pot for water, so, uh, please, they would like as many people to be there as possible. And considering the, uh, street gun violence that we have seen in our, um, well, in our county. Because we don't always hear about it and that's what's going on in an harbor, however, we do have a member in the team that is from an harbor. And he, uh, is, he lets us know that there are things that are going on also, street violence there also, so please. Um, wanted to say a little bit about the disturbance that was in City Hall, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, that we got the report on. Uh, it was really quite disturbing to hear that someone was able to come into the building with, uh, three concealed weapons. And get up to the third and I'm not sure if they got all the way up to the fourth floor or not. But that was, it was really quite, um, disturbing to read it. And Mister Varr was kind enough to share the police report with me. And the police report was even more disturbing and disappointing. In the fact that an, an individual got all the way in the building up to the upper floors with three concealed weapons. Um, when you think about all of the, the mass shootings that are going on. That makes one, at least it makes me shudder to think about what could have happened. It could have been a totally different, uh, outcome than what it was. But what disturbed me even more was that the gentleman was allowed to leave with the weapons that he had no permits for. Um, rather than, and the, left with the weapons. And it seems like without him having permits, that, um, should have been enough for, at least for the weapons that have been confiscated. If he had not been arrested, but, uh, I think we need to, um. To ask our police to do a little bit better job of, uh, protecting our staff. We, I don't wanna see any of our staff hurt or injured. And I think that, um, I know we got the report that the, um. Weight in and out of the building was changing and some of the, the, uh, movement around in the building was also, some doors were being closed. But please, we need to do all that we can to keep staff, uh, to keep our staff safe. I would hate to hear of anyone within this building, whether it was the staff or a resident that was in to take care of some business. Being injured by someone coming in. Um, and I don't know if they, I know, were they, uh, were the police ever able to locate the gentleman again?
Did you want me to answer that or talk about that more, or?
You're gonna talk about it in your report?
I was just gonna talk about what we're doing.
Oh, okay, all right, but, um. I don't know, I just, I just believe that we need, I was truly disappointed to hear that, that our police officers just allowed him to leave. With the weapons that he came in with, so, um. And that's all that I have for remarks, so, sitting down.
Thank you, um, Mayor. First of all, um, I guess I'll go ahead and address that, um, concerning the incident that, uh, here at City Hall. I mean, we're all aware, uh, there was, um. Uh, customer, but there was an outsider that was allowed to enter our building. And to proceed to the third floor as we normally allow, uh, bus leave one that had a business here at City Hall. So there was no way for, uh, staff or anyone to know what their intentions were, that's what anyone. But, uh, we've taken this, um, incident, um, very seriously. Um, and as a, as, um, a result of that incident, um, we're working on, as the mayor said, securing the building. A little bit more, um, actually some of the plans, uh, that we're thinking about doing is not allowing. Uh, people to actually get in the building without being bussed in like right here. Instead of so far back there, but there are a lot of, um, options that we have, so it kinda just opened their eyes a little bit. To, um, see that, you know, we weren't secure as we needed to be. Um, yes, it is correct that, um, the person was allowed to, uh, leave the building. And since then, we've done some investigation to find out why that occurred and why they weren't apprehended. At that point, but at that point, there were a lot of unknowns. At that point, um, if they had a license to carry, you know, a lot of things like that, that were not, um. Now, and the police officers, um, made the best decision that they thought at the point, at that point. But since going back looking at everything, uh, we decided that some things could have been done differently. And so those officers have been addressed and so we've taken this as an opportunity to, um, address all the officers. Because we think it can't happen to us, but it's right at our door. So as a result, um, all the officers, um, are being, um, you know, debriefed. And then also our staff will, um, go through some Alice training, some active shooting trainings, some things that we can do. Um, as well in those types of situations. Uh, yes, the person has resurfaced and has appeared again, um, at the police department. Not here at City Hall, but they wanna come to City Hall. But, um, at this point, I have instructed, um, all staff not to let the person pass the first floor. And we have distributed photos of that person so everyone knows, um, how to recognize that person. So it's unfortunate that it happened, I am grateful that none of our staff was harmed. But it was quite, um, alarming. So we're doing what we can do right now with physical structure and there's more to come. Uh, to tighten up the security in the building, so stay tuned for that. And across, um, Mayor, is there anything else you wanna know about that before I move on?
No, it, it's just, I, I too am very, very grateful that no one was hurt and grateful that staff is, uh, working on making. The building and staff more safe, thank you.
So, yeah, there, there, um, stay tuned, there will be some, um, building adjustments as well and some training as well. Uh, another part of my report is, I just wanted to report that we're, um, busy working with YPD on, uh, staffing solutions. We know that they are down officers, we just lost another one who took a job in Redford. Uh, but we, he was one of the five that we thought, so it's not an additional one, but we're, um, working on, um. Um, additional staffing solutions that will not take as long to, as it would to take a police officer to come up to speed. If you know what I'm saying, there's civilian positions that we could do that would take some of the, uh, administrative things off, uh, sergeants and lieutenants and put them on the road. Okay, so those are some of the things that we're looking, um, into. While we are strategizing, um, to see if we may implement, um. Uh, sending them to Bliss Academy, these are things that, uh, we're pricing out, things that we're looking. Uh, what other communities are doing, if that is an option, but as we know, that's like a three-year period. And so we're looking at how we can, um. I wanna say more than here, I'm making more tracking to come here and commit to being an officer. So that's long range, but in the short range, I'm gonna do some reorganizing so that those that are trained can be out on the street. Um, and we can have some civilian officers, I mean, some civilian people doing some of this administrative work that takes up their time.
Um, along with that, um, I'm glad to hear that you are, uh, going to make some of those changes. That, um, will certainly increase the numbers that are available for the street. There, uh, I got two or three phone calls from the same person and also a, a message that. I guess there is a rumor going around, um, the city, um, that we're going to dissolve the police department. That we are not going to have, um, Department of Police Department anymore, any active police. So if some way or other that could be squashed, I did, um. Respond back to the person that there were no plans for us to dissolve, to dissolve the police department, that the police department would be continuing. That the, the chief is leaving on the thirtieth, but there is already an interim chief, um, scheduled to step right in. And that we will continue to have, uh, city police services. So if maybe there could be something, um, put out in the, um. Address on, um, the, on Facebook or whatever, however, the city.
Uh, maybe I haven't heard that at all, but I will, um, once, um, our interim gets in place, I'll, I'll introduce them to the community. While we introduce them, then make a statement at that point that I hadn't heard anything or got any questions, but, but we will reiterate that.
I got calls while I, I didn't take the calls because I was at a conference and was not, um. Able to just take calls, but, um, I got two calls, I got, what, three calls, Friday, one Saturday and then Sunday. And then one yesterday from the same person with that, and that was the, the message that they had. So, but I tried my best to assure them that, no, we're not involving.
Yeah, I haven't heard that at all. So, um, next I'd like to report that all staff evaluations have been completed. Um, that we are immediately complete with all of the labor negotiations. um, that we are nearly complete with all of the labor negotiations. TPOAM, which was formerly, asked me as, uh, ratifying their contract, and I'll bring some specifics to council in the report, uh, the fire, IAF, they have TA, every item, and it's going to their body for notification, so the only one left outstanding is POAM, police officers, and it's just some housekeeping stuff, and so we're pretty good, good, uh, pace with them, and it's almost complete. So that is, I loved, I loved this because it was a hard time. Um, I also wanna report that, um, I'm busy working with JEL, Economic Development, on the approved developments that we approved, and actually on some prospective developments, uh, coming forward that, you know, just stay tuned, we'll give you some information as it, um, becomes available or it becomes a little bit more solidified. And I think that's all I'll say for now, oh, I don't wanna forget this, I wanna congratulate, um, our new, uh, Department of Public Services Director, Bonnie Westman.
Yeah.
There, and, uh, we, we're glad that Bonnie is here, Bonnie, um, was already in DPS, it's like things just kinda work, she sums out and got her feet wet, and it's only been a couple of weeks, but she's doing a fine job so far, so uh, I believe that's all I, I'll say for now, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh, City Manager, for, um, for those communications, okay, other communication, um, well, before I go on, did, was there anyone from, any council person want to comment on, is that enough communications from the City Manager?
Oh, I was just like, you know, I, I meant, I forgot to mention during my, uh, business about the evaluations you're supposed to be doing for, uh, City Manager or City Clerk, and I think we just need to move on to those, it's only not just a couple, but I'm gonna send a reminder email, and then I think, you know, as I said, we need to move forward and get those to the City Clerk and City Manager for their review and, you know, whether they are on public or not, and get those done in October.
Okay, yes, because they are past due, and to, um, hopefully the council members that are not present will uh, go over the, um, tape from this meeting, and please, all council members, if you have not turned in your evaluations to, uh, Miss Simmons, please get them in, uh, it's unfair to her, who is, uh, coordinating it all, but it's even more unfair to both the clerk and the City Manager to delay, those were due back in July, and now we're coming up on October the first, so please, if you have not got it, please do it and get it in, thank you. All right, uh, let's move on to communications. October eighteenth, City Council and Planning Commission Joint Meeting, and we will meet at EMU Student Center, um. We, in the past, we met at McKinney Hall, we're actually meeting in the student center.
Correct.
I have a problem with that, their parking for their student center is extremely expensive.
We'll be getting vouchers.
You would say what?
We will be getting vouchers.
Oh, you'll have vouchers, okay, thank you. Uh, okay, well, any public comments, do we have anyone virtually, we have no one in the audience, so, okay.
If anyone attending virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. No hands are raised.
Okay, thank you, um, well, bingo public comments, uh, Mister Jones Statt?
Resolution number twenty-two-two-two-zero resolved by the Council of the City of Itzalani, but the City Council meeting be adjourned, I'm called by the Mayor, three council members, I so move.
It's been moved and supported, the meeting is adjourned.